Cody Daffer, how are you?
I'm doing alright, yourself?
I'm doing alright, man.
Right on.
Yeah, lot of, lot of conversations today. Glad to be sitting here with you. So, look, you live in Nampa, you're running for Nampa City Council, right?
Correct.
Lately, I've been getting, like, I don't know why, like, you could be like, no, I'm running for mayor. I'm like, yeah, I always, I don't know why, I just like, I mean, it's impossible for me to get him straight. But again, I'm right, city council for Nampa. You live in Nampa, you lived there for some time. Talk to me about why you want to be on city council.
Sure, there's actually a lot of reasons, but we'll just go through them and see how this goes. But first off, I, I have a principle, and that's that everybody should serve their community in some capacity, right? To the best of your abilities, provide for your family, serve your community. And that can be in church, that could be serving the military, civic, something, you need to give back. Like, that's how America works is you don't just take, you give, right? And so I've served on the Planning and Zoning Commission for the last three years, and this is the next logical step for me in that I want to serve more, I want to provide for more of my skill set to my community. And, and that goes in a lot of different ways. I, I think that there needs to be examples in the community of civil discourse that's friendly, not combative, like,
Sure.
How do I say that? I disagree without hating the other person, right? Like, in today's political climate, it's hard to find that. It's, it's pretty easy to argue, and it's pretty easy to get upset about what you're arguing about and take it personally when most people have an opinion, they just want to feel heard and they, and invalidated in their opinion. And you can walk away friends, it's very possible, you just don't take it personally, right? And then as community leaders, we need more examples of that, right? And on a pragmatic sense, I've got a master's degree in real estate development. I've been in the real estate development field here in the Treasure Valley for the last decade, and I understand why things are happening the way they are. I understand the developer side, I also understand the resident side. What people like to throw at me is, you're a developer, I wouldn't vote for you because you're just going to vote pro developer all the time. That's not true. I live here too. I have to drive on the same streets, pay the same taxes, I have to deal with everything everybody else deals with. But if you're not growing, you're dying, right? That's how cities work, you're either growing or suffering. You can't just pause, pause isn't an option. And so there's smart ways to do it, and then there's less smart ways to do it, we'll say. And I feel like with my education background, with my experience and my disposition, I can fill this role and hit a lot of those checkmarks. And I want to be able to put in, put in my time and go, you know, I'm not a career politician, I don't want to do this forever. I have no aspirations of anything more, I just want to help out. And Nampa's in a very, it's at an apex point, right? It's, there's a lot of directions it can go, and right now it's kind of critical, and I want to be a part of making sure that I at least was in the conversation so that I can say it went in a direction that I was hoping it would go.
Okay, man, here we go. Talk to me about what the problem is that you feel like needs to be addressed, and why we have that problem?
Alright, my first, like, if I could change one thing about probably America, but Nampa specifically, is civic participation. If I, if, if I could only run on that, I would, because to me, that's the most important part. Everybody complains about, well, they're just going to say yes to the developer, they're just going to approve everything and, and they don't care about us. And I know that because almost every time I've put my name out there, that's the response I get, especially on social media. And the fact of the matter is, we try really hard to listen. So on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I will get a, a packet every Thursday before the next Tuesday meeting. And those things are from 250 to 500 pages thick, like, there's a lot to go through. And anytime someone submits a public comment, it ends up in that packet because it's public record, right? And then at the meeting, you can also come testify for, against, or undecided on a project, and you're part of the public record. And, and we take those considerations seriously. It's not just a, oh, you're just crazy, don't know what you're talking about, it's
Sometimes it's that way.
And, and public input is really critical of the process, right? Did you vote? If you didn't vote, why are you complaining now? You should have voted. If you, in my opinion, if you voted, you have every right to complain. If you didn't vote, you need to go vote next time, right? That's my strong opinion on that matter.
Right, that's a fair point.
And another example of civil participation is, Nampa is right now, re, you, every 10 years, you gotta update your comprehensive plan. And right now, the city of Nampa is going through a lot of processes and procedures to get as many opinions as possible, because we don't get that many. People don't come volunteer it, we have go find them and then practically beg them to fill out a survey. And it's very difficult, you know, and right now is the time for people to come give their opinion. This is when things get shaped, right? And it's not when the project is in front of city council, now I get to go share my voice. Now, at that point, there's been a lot of other things that have already come into place that's really hard to stop it. It's not impossible, but it's very hard. Whereas right now, if you put your opinion in, we shape the comprehensive plan, which shapes the future land use map, which shapes decisions, everybody, like, when, when a developer sees a piece of land, the very first thing they do is they go check the future land use map. What can I do on this piece of dirt, right? It's not, I'm going to build houses here, what do I got to do to make it happen? It's, oh, it's designated for this in the future land use map, in the comprehensive plan. And it just backs all the way up there, right? And if people would participate now, if we could get every citizen to give their opinion, we look at those surveys, say, 63% of people want this, let's put it in. Only 15% of people want that, we're probably not going to focus on that. Then, and that's how we shape it, it's how the process works. What I'm finding is that the people that are that participate more lean towards the pro-growth side. But the people that want to complain about slowing things down, don't want to go talk to the government. Why that dynamic is, I don't know, I'd love to find out. But when people that come out to talk about things, is generally people that want to see the growth or want to see something happen on that land. And the people that don't want to don't get their voice heard because they don't come voice it in a way where we can actually quantify it and see what that opinion is. As, so that's if I could make civil discourse my platform, so people would come participate, I would be all for it. I mean, my vote is easily swayed by that. I, I want, if I represent people, I want them to have what they want. I have my own opinions. But if people want something, let's find a smart way to get that. You know, if, if really 90% of people in Nampa want it to stop, let's find a way to do that. But I'm finding that that's not the case. There's a lot of people that don't want that, you know, and let's find out all that, so.
So civic participation and feedback is one big thing for you.
It's huge. And we can differ all day, it, but I want to know what your opinion is, I want to know why, and I want to make sure we understand. Close, closely tied to that would be civic education. A lot of the people that come to planning and zoning to complain about things are usually complaining about something they don't understand. And once educated on that, it's like, oh, that makes sense, I understand why I was upset before and why, what, what's different now, right? That doesn't mean there aren't reasons to complain, but misunderstandings happen more often than not. So understanding the process, like, most people probably don't know what the comprehensive plan's about, and that this is their opportunity to. And I don't know why we don't have more of an education on this stuff in public education in high school and stuff like that, because
Because, listen, we're not even teaching kids how to fill out a check.
Right.
How are we going to teach them planning and zoning?
Right. It's, it's just some basics to get started, because like, you got all the information in the world and an AI that could spit this all out to you, but you don't even think to type, how do I change this into it, you know, as it's there's got to be a better way, right? And that would be what I would change in a heartbeat.
What are the, like, the Nampa School District curriculum?
No, just civic education in general. Like, just if I could find a way to educate people, I would do it. I know the city goes to a lot of trouble to try. But if people don't come participate, it's, it's really an attitude thing. If the general attitude changed to, I, part of this government, I'm going to participate, people would come figure it out pretty quick.
Yeah, I mean, that's a really tough one. Like, so I don't disagree that more people being more educated would obviously be a great thing.
Yeah.
But I think you have to really pare down, and I'm not saying, like, if this is your big thing, that's fine. I, I just think that in general, people have to pare down what they can expect and ask from individuals in general, right? Like, most of the time, like, people spend, I think, upwards of four to five hours per day on their phones, right? And they're consuming information in a passive manner, meaning they're not going even, like, I don't go to websites ever.
Right.
Like, I avoid them like the plague. And that's, that's because I have to do something, whereas, you know, getting information fed to me is obviously a very easy thing to do. I'm not a big consumer of social media, but like, people are, right? And this is, this is kind of the big problem, which is you have to find a way, if you're really curious, like, you have to find a way to slide information into, you know, essentially the platforms where people are hanging out, and you can educate them on nuances of the city. Like, I'm a huge advocate for, you know, reaching out and, or excuse me, reaching people through social media platforms, obviously for education. And honestly, like, the, if you want to educate people en masse about nuances that are not that interesting, like, you got to figure out a way to do it on social media. And if you can't do it right, like, people will consume it voraciously. You just have to make sure you, you're doing it in the platform they care about.
Alright, yep. And I would even back up and say, let's not even try teaching the nuances, just the process, right? And that, this leads back to my first point of civic participation, because if you just went and served on the golf commission, it's a pretty simple one, it's once a month, it's an hour long, it's easy, and it's just going and participating, that teaches you how the process works. And so when you go to complain about something, you understand how to go make those complaints, how to make those changes, it's there's no, there, you get frustrated, but you can get frustrated and do something about it, right? And that's, that's, to me, is number one, like, this is America, let's all participate. And it's, it's an attitude and a cultural shift, right? We, we don't do that anymore. So I want to be an example of that, right? Because I'm not a politician, and it is absolutely terrifying doing this. I've not been this scared in a long time. And not for my life, for the record, just
Yeah, yeah.
Just being vulnerable in front of a lot of people.
Do you do a lot of door knocking?
I haven't, because I don't have enough time. I've, I will talk to anybody who come talk to me, but I could knock on five doors and talk to five people, or I can pass out 100 pamphlets in the same amount of time, so it's, what do I do, right?
Yeah, man.
So I've gone the numbers route instead of the quality route, we'll see, we'll see what happens, but.
So civic participation, civic, civic education, got it. But like, what are the other, like, what are the structural problems or bigger issues within Nampa, aside from like, the Nampa citizens just aren't participating or aren't educated enough?
Sure. So from my perspective, how Nampa grows is really important right now. We're at a point with Highway 16 going in, with our downtown being what it is, everybody talks about that with the infrastructure, what it is, like, we're just at a point where critical decisions are going to have to be made. And I want to make sure that if I have a chance to be a part of that, I am, because I've got a lot of experience in this field, and I don't want this to be left to just somebody who's
Whoever.
Who has a platitude that they're trying to live to. I think platitudes in politics are really irritating, and if you live by them, you're going to make decisions by them, and that's how a lot of problems start, in my opinion.
Can you give me an example? Like, what, how do you think that's playing out in Nampa?
Say, someone says, I would never raise taxes, or I would never take foregone. Like, those kind of platitudes immediately close the conversation. Like, you can't discuss it anymore because you said I would never. And well, last year, we had to take foregone to fund our police department, right? And I, I will stop growth, or I will, I will never allow us to do, that kind of stuff, to me, is what's going to end discourse. And I don't want that. Like I said before, talking back and forth, sharing ideas, that's the important part, because we got to all come to an agreement on it.
Yeah.
And so I, I don't want to live in a city, I don't want to live in a big city. I wouldn't have moved to Nampa if it was a big city. And so I don't want Nampa to become a big city. But let's talk about the reality of the situation. Nampa is south of the freeway. And they've made an agreement with the county that at a certain line, they'll stop developing south. And I agree with that line, like, we should, we need to preserve farmland to the south. But between the freeway and Chindon, all of that farm ground that's currently being farmed is already owned by land bankers and developers. It's not owned by farmers anymore. And you, you can find exceptions, but in general, it's people that bought it with the intention of developing it. So it's being farmed because they get a tax break until they go develop it. So it's, my point is, it's going to get developed, and whatever city annexes it first gets it, right? And whatever city annexes, annexes it, gets a say in what happens there. And right now, Nampa's got a huge area of impact through there, but I've seen parcels go to Caldwell because Nampa wasn't ready for it, you know? And so Caldwell gets the tax revenue, Caldwell gets the decisions, Caldwell starts to take over, right? And so you can deal with the growing pains in Nampa, or you can deal with the growing pains living next to somebody else, but you're going to deal with it either way, at least with, if we are doing, or if we're, if we are in control of it, we get a say in the matter. If we're not in control of it, we just deal with it, right?
What, what is it, besides, hey, I get to decide how that develops? Like, what's the benefit? What's the value proposition to Nampa citizens?
Sure, so there's, there's a, a greater tax base, right? So we can spread the costs over a lot of things. We get to dictate what, what goes where, right? This corridor is going to be for commercial, and we want a master plan community over here, we want this here, and like, we'll get to say what happens there. But if our comp plan calls for this, and here's, here's a good example, so 15, 10, 15 years ago, Nampa and Caldwell were talking about their border, and the story I was told, and I was not there to verify this, was that Nampa reached out to Caldwell, and Caldwell pretty much said, no, go away, we don't want to talk about it. Well, Nampa had planned industrial along that border, and Caldwell decided they wanted housing. Housing goes in faster, and so they got a bunch of communities right along the, the line there. But like, last year, Tractor Supply came in and, and wanted to build an industrial warehouse for the, their stores.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it's right across the street from these neighborhoods, right? Nobody wants an industrial store that has hazardous chemicals and things like that in, right next door there. And that's a perfect example of if you're in control, and you get to make those decisions, right? A little while ago,
What, what happened? Did they build Tractor Supply?
They got approved, it's going in, and all the Caldwell residents couldn't, didn't have a say in the matter, like, they could, a lot of them came to the city council meeting, but they're not part of the city, right?
So the risk is, with the area that you're talking about, that, that's waiting, that's currently being farmed, you're like, listen, if, if Nampa doesn't grab that, Caldwell could grab it, and Caldwell could make it like an industrial hub, and Nampa wouldn't have anything to say about it. And then we'd have, you know, just north of us, we'd have this, like, big industrial nasty.
Yep. And I think, so we have Highway 16 going in, right? And that infrastructure that's being paid for by the state is a fantastic opportunity for us to put in new businesses, new high-density residential along these highways, that, that's, that's what city planning, that, those are basic city planning principles. You put the high-density and commercial along the highways, and you put the suburbs out a little ways, and that's how it plays out. And this is a perfect chance to do that. But if we don't jump in there and be a part of that, Meridian's right there, they're going to start taking all those properties along, along the highway there. And commercial properties is where your tax revenue really comes in, right? You get a lot of tax revenue from that, and why, why just give that over to Meridian? Because we want to stop now, when it's going to go in one way or another, right? Let's be a part of it. So it's kind of with our current comp plan being redone, and my participation so far in the Planning and Zoning Commission, I know that I'm in a position to have a lot of informed decisions in that, in that I can be a part of how that gets shaped.
Gotcha. Switching gears a little bit, talk to me about law enforcement in Nampa.
Sure. So when I first threw in my, my hat and the ring, I went and visited with the police chief, Joe Huff, and let him give me a tour and talk to me about what's going on. And what he's got going on there is pretty neat, they've done a really good job. They've got really high morale, and they're doing a lot with what they have. Something that people don't understand a lot of is, is impact fees. Everyone talks about charging the developers more impact fees. But what impact fees are for are for new infrastructure, they're not for maintenance and salaries and things like that. So we can buy all kinds of equipment for our police stations, and which they've used a lot of, and they're doing a really good job with. But we can't pay officer salaries with it, and we can't put oil changes for the cars, like that, like, that's not what impact fees are legally for. So we're short 25 officers because they get paid for out of the tax revenue, not the impact fees. So just dumping a bunch of more impact fees onto developers isn't going to help that, right? We need the tax revenue to pay for more officers. And we're 25 officers behind, and Chief Huff told me that, you know, he could maybe bring on six a year, between training them and, and finding the right candidates and stuff, you can't just go hire 25 guys and be, or 25 officers and be done with it. It's
Right.
It's, it's a process. So if we're going to grow, we need the police department to grow with it, right? It's got to come along for the ride, for lack of a better way to put it, you know?
So how do we fund that?
Well, that's, that's kind of part of my point, is if we are part of the conversation, and we have those areas in Nampa, that tax revenue goes to us. And at the, there was a forum the other night for all the Nampa candidates, and I do not remember which of the mayoral candidates brought it up, but they this idea, they brought up an idea of having a special new construction tax district. I thought was interesting. I don't know how it works out legally just yet, I haven't done enough homework on it, but essentially, the idea that I think he was talking about was, instead of charging impact fees, charging a new tax district for two years after it was built. And because it's now a tax district instead of impact fees, you can use that money for whatever you want. So anytime a new subdivision goes in, those impact fees can pay the new officer salary instead of just a new car, right? And changing how things are classified. And so you can use the money in different ways, I think is an interesting way to look at things and something that needs to be teased out. I know, I've never seen it proposed yet, so I'm curious how it will go.
Gotcha, gotcha. Talk to me about maintenance of, of existing infrastructure in Nampa. I mean, this is obviously a big problem. People are talking about, like, yeah, new developments have beautiful roads, but then, you know, you have older Nampa that doesn't have great roads, and there's no money going to those, or insufficient funds going to those. You know, infrastructure, roads, sewer, the whole bit.
So I, I'm, I'm conservative, I'm fiscally conservative, I'm, I don't like taxes. But I also believe fiscal responsibility isn't just spending the least amount of money, right? It's you, you got a car, make sure you change the oil kind of deal, right? And I think that for too long, Nampa has elected officials who lived by the platitude of, I'm going to lower taxes. And I think that my generation is going to get caught up in the decisions of the last two or three generations because of that. Like, I don't know how old the, some of those sewer pipes are, they got to be, you know, pushing 80 years old, and they don't get maintained and they don't get replaced because there just isn't money to do that. So how we generate more revenue is one discussion, and how we spend that revenue is another, you know, like the Idaho Center is a great example of not using the money to maintain what you have, right? And end up in the situation we're in there, but being able to having a better plan for what is going to get maintained next, and finding better ways to do things, I think is important, like that there's, the way the, the new poly, poly pipes that they got going in, they, they, they've found ways to make things a lot cheaper now that, that stick around a lot longer. There's, science is finally starting to help the construction industry. It's been a long time since science has had a hand in the construction industry, but it's just difficult to decide what to do with what dollars you have, you know? I also wonder how things would go if we spent more of our resources on trying to find federal grants to pay for things, because applying for federal grants is not easy, it's very difficult, and there's a huge process to it. And generally, you got to find experts at specifically grants to do that. And I know Nampa's been successful in the past at finding some grants, but I wonder if there's more that we could do there. I'm saying that as a concerned citizen, not as somebody who's done a lot of homework on it, so.
Gotcha. Talk to me about the Ford Idaho Center. And I know by the time, you know, the election happens, it's probably going to be determined what, what the fate will be, but what do you, what do you think about that situation?
Well, I I think that, I'm not going to share anything that hasn't already been said, but every time I talk to somebody about it, everyone's got a differing opinion. And the only thing that's been consistent across the board is it was, the, the decision they feel has been rushed, and we don't know enough about it. Like, it was kind of a PR mess for this, the mayor and the city council. And when you talk to the city council about it, they, they've been talking about it for a long time, and they'll tell you that, but the public hasn't, and the public doesn't feel like they haven't. And I think the biggest issue there is, they feel like they've been duped, right? So that's the problem with the situation. How would I vote personally? I would vote to put a levy on the ballot. Personally, I would even vote for the levy. I was just, I'm not convicted in that enough to impose that levy on others. But if that levy failed, I would be for conveying it to CDWI. And the reason I am is because if you sell it, there's a decent chance it gets knocked down, and something else goes there, because the value in that building is the land. And if you convey it, the state will maintain it, and all of our businesses built around it still benefit from all the events that happen there. So, and I don't want to see the stampede go away. There's a lot of cultural history there that is important to Nampa.
Businesses, right? Downtown businesses in Nampa. There's, this is a big consideration. A lot of people point to Caldwell, a lot of people point to Meridian, having like, a there, there's a there there. And like, you can go there, and you can enjoy there, and then you can leave from there and go here, wherever, right? But you have, like, a real downtown corridor for economic activity in those areas. How, is that something that would be good for Nampa? And if so, how do you, how do we revitalize downtown Nampa?
So what's difficult about downtown Nampa is it's got a lot of really cool old-style architecture. And I personally think is really neat. Before I knew much about it, I always looked at those buildings and like, man, that's awesome, why don't we build things like that anymore? Then I learned about it, and it's because it's expensive, right? And do you, what's, what's, what's more valuable, your culture or bringing in new business? And it's anybody's call, but what we're currently doing is where we, we've met a few times with the city staff, and we're trying to change the zoning codes. Because right now, they're pretty strict, and we're training, trying to change to what's called a form-based code, which basically opens the creative minds up, and as long as they fit into these categories, these parameters, the city staff can approve it, and doesn't have to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, doesn't have to go to the, the city council, and they can go do that, right? And which speeds up timelines, which reduces fees, which reduces burdens on the city, like reducing timelines is pretty huge, especially when you're financing things. You know, it's every day is tens of thousands of dollars that you're not putting into the, into the property, or you're just paying interest to the bank. And so being able to speed things up would make a huge difference there. I think that downtown's important, there's, there's a park down there, there's it, it's not super walkable right now, you know, and then there's ways to improve that. A lot of times when they have events there, they block off some of the parking, like, it's I am a little envious of what Caldwell's got. I think that's a really awesome downtown, but I do think that there's something we can do with ours. We just got to find ways to attract developers to it. And having a form-based code will. And, but also maybe coming up with some incentives to bring them in, right? There's tax incentives that we can, we can provide, there's ways that the city can provide foot traffic that we can come up with and things like that to, to revitalize the downtown. But I also so there, I don't know how often you've driven down in downtown Nampa, but there's the, the one-way streets, and they're kind of a mess. And right now, they're, they're looking at redoing those streets so that they're all two-way streets, because trying to drive through downtown, you get just about every red light possible, because there's not any other way to do it, just and it's hard to pull in and out of the parking garage, it's hard to pull in and out of businesses. So adjusting the traffic patterns there, I think, will help a lot. It'll give people a reason to park and get out, as opposed to, I just got to get out here because it's too stressful, you know?
Gotcha. Kind of related to, some people have talked about different property types and options for individuals, right? Because Nampa still offers an attainability with housing that, you know, is being lost in other, other areas, right? Do you think that building different property types and different, you know, essentially, real estate products in the downtown corridor, as well as other places, could be kind of that segue to making sure that there's still a homeownership attainability in Nampa?
Sure. So I think, so I'm, I'm really in favor of letting the market dictate things. I don't like the government having its hand in, in that kind of stuff, personally. So, for example, my parents' generation, everybody wanted to have a house and a big yard for the kids to go play in, right? And Nampa's full of that right now. Not, it's expensive, but that's the product type that gets pumped out a lot. But my generation and younger generations, their attitude is, I had to mow my parents' yard so much, I don't want one, right? So they want townhomes, or apartments, or condos, so they don't have to maintain a yard. Like, it's, that's kind of what the market's going toward right now. So I think So I think having more broad code with flexibility to give developers a chance to respond to the market and what the market wants is, that's what the developers, that's what they do. They respond to the market and they try to make money off of it, right? So if we open up the, I don't wanna say open up the floodgates, cause that, I'm not trying to imply just approve every structure, right? But I do want to provide opportunities for more ideas to come in because the more you restrict things, the less ideas flow. And I wanna see some more ideas. I wanna see some unique things, you know? Having, having some multi, I think, having some multifamily near downtown would be fantastic. Providing a place where you can work, live and play provides foot traffic. It provides businesses with people to come walk by. You know, if I had an apartment downtown, I'm gonna work in an office downtown, I'm gonna walk downtown to go to a restaurant, I'm gonna go play at the park. And that's what Caldwell did, right? They have their streets or their, they got their, uh, businesses around the park, but all those businesses have apartments on top, right? So there's a lot of people that are just there, you know? And I think there's a stage in life when you wanna live in an apartment. There's a stage in life where you wanna live in a house. And then there's probably a stage in life where you wanna move back to a smaller house because you don't wanna maintain the yard anymore because grandkids aren't living there, right? So they're, having a multiplicity of product types keeps families in the same place as opposed to, okay, Nampa's the single-family housing place, Boise's the apartment place and, you know, we're dividing it like that, you know?
Gotcha. Um, Cody, we've talked about a lot of things, my guy. Um, what are we, what are we missing? And I know we talked about growth, we talked about zoning, we talked about upkeep, maintenance, law enforcement, uh, the Ford Idaho Center, housing. What are we missing?
Um, well, um, it's a good question. I'm sure that we could keep talking forever, but, uh, I'm kind of blanking on all my topics here. Forgot my note cards at home.
I, I mean, if you have a whole lot more topics, I'd, I'd be amazed that there's not that much more.
Well, so when we were, we had our forum the other night and, uh, there are just certain ways things get framed that I just feel like are too divisive. Like, let's bring it back to civil discourse, right? Like, sure. That to me is really what it's all about. If, if I lose, but I'm able to get more people involved, that to me is a win. Like, I just, I want people to have an example of, I'm a regular guy. And I have a nine-to-five job. I live here and I wanna make this a better place and I want my son to be able to live here. I married into a family that's lived in Nampa for four generations. And every generation has been able to grow up in the town and live in the town and grow up in the town and live in the town. And, and we're, they're small business owners. That small business has gone through the family and, you know, I've, we've been able to find a place for my wife to live in the town she grew up in, but it was hard, right? The housing prices are impossible, almost. Like, I have a master's degree and we're struggling to find a way to live in this town with what I would consider a very livable wage. And that's kind of the challenge of our generation is how, how do we make Nampa a mult-? How do we keep Nampa a multi-generational town, right? It's not, it's not a place people come to because it's the big city and then go back home. It's, it's the home people even come back to, right? And I wanna keep it that way.
Gotcha. Well, I appreciate you, man. Thank you for running. You know, I, stepping outside your comfort zone, bringing your issues and your expertise to, to public service is not, it's not an easy thing. And, uh, that's, a lot of people are doing that and I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's one of those deals where I did it because I was scared of it. And I didn't know how scared of it I would be until I did it. And holy smokes, it's, uh, it's intense.
Yeah, I gotta be honest, I'm not good with public speaking either. Like, I'm great one-on-one, we can sit here, talk all day. Uh, but if you put me in front of a bunch of people, I'm like, ugh!
Yep, I get that.
It's pretty ridiculous, so I appreciate you for that. But thanks for, uh, thanks for bringing the ideas and, uh, thanks for coming out, man.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, good luck with your campaign.
Thanks.